Board, if you would join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
No changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman.
Entertainer motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from September 8th, 2020.
This is the agenda.
It's all the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Now, has anyone reviewed the minutes and found any issues? Having hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. In this meeting, David Capen will be the voting member. Is there any public comment for any item that is not on the agenda? No? Okay, I guess we can move on to the first item.
And it's a little difficult for some of those more in the back to hear. Everyone's microphone's on.
Please let us know if we need to speak up or get closer.
So, thank you again, Chairman, Board. Tonight, I'm presenting a proposed amendment to our comprehensive transportation plan related to the proposal of section of Markham Drive. In order to provide some context for the request, I thought it might be beneficial to give everyone an overview of how this fits into a larger project that we've been working on. I think most of you are aware that we've been working with the Wake County Public School and Wake Tech Community College on a new high school that's going to be opening up in Morrisville. And this request kind of ties into that partnership and that opportunity. And I think some of you may know a little bit more about it than others. So again, just want to provide a brief overview first so that you have that context. And that's going to be important for both this item and then the following item that you're going to hear as well. So as background, Wake Tech Community College, they own about 90 acres by 54 and Watkins Road. They have a master plan for the build out of the campus that had about a dozen or so buildings. With the virtual learning impacts and some changing programmatic needs, they found that they just don't need as much physical space as they had originally planned on back in 2015. Therefore, they've reevaluated. They remain as committed as ever to Morrisville, but they've reevaluated and opened up some other opportunities and some other partnerships that I think are great for the community and really lead to some great synergies. And at the last town council meeting on October 11th, we actually proposed or briefed the council on three agreements related to this partnership. The inter-local agreement is kind of the master agreement. I call it the parent agreement of the other agreements. So just broad overview. Is everything that you're seeing here is part of this partnership? Selling 34 acres of land. Also be leasing to the town 18 acres. Not interested in this 18 acres. As part of this partnership as well, there are two and a half acres of property up at the northwest corner of the site. Incorporating that land into that a much more usable site. Therefore, there's what we've been referring to as a fire station land swap where the town will be selling that property conveying that property. Just down the street. Property that they would be leasing. Still keeps our fire station. Side of the airport overlay. Just an overall image. I will say this was a feasibility sketch that was done. I don't want anyone to get too tied to uses that they're seeing. So somewhat beneficial to provide some context. This is the new property for the high school. Site being used for parking. Fire station property and then. That's just a closer up minute. So in terms of timeline, what we're talking about is design of the high school in fiscal year 24, construction in fiscal year 26. Seven, 2028 school year. The fire station does still need to be funded in the capital improvement plan, so we don't have a timeline for it. And the design and use of the parkland has yet to be decided. That would be, need to be incorporated. But those discussions will be. So again, that is really all just background for the CTP amendment that I'm going to. Well, as the rezoning amendment. If you have any questions about any of this, I'm happy to answer those as well.
I did have a quick question. If you go back up to the, covering the land swap, right, like that one's fine, two sides down there, or one side down from here. So that existing parcel is property that is currently owned by the town, is that right? And the building as well. And then, so the new parcel is to be constructing a new facility on land that is then leased back from the Wake County Public School System? Okay. And then you said funding for that building or preparing that land is still, is still to be determined. I guess, I just wanted to ask, how does that work if, you know, in terms of the swap, if the town is conveying to the Wake County Public School System property that is already owned and then swapping it for roughly the same acreage, but then needing funds to construct a new building? I guess if you could clarify, because that doesn't necessarily make sense to me. It's like, you know, you give me your house that you own, I'll give you my apartment and you can pay rent.
The lease is a 99-year lease, $1 per year. That discussion was that we're swapping two and a half acres for.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So fast forwarding to the action that's actually before you for consideration. Comprehensive transportation. And the existing comprehensive transportation plan, 2019 plan, there is a local road show drive extension. As the planning and zoning board is aware, whenever an applicant comes forward wanting to develop a site, they need to dedicate and build any roads that are shown. That would go for the town, that would go for the school system as well. This is an image of the Wake Tech Community College original master plan. A rough estimate of how Markham Drive. And you could see that we already have some conflicts with the. If you overlay that on the feasibility sketch for the overall partnership and all the different improvements that we're now talking about. Again, there are conflicts on the Wake Tech Community College property. The new road would go through the parkland and then come out on Paramount Parkway. It looks like it would be somewhere along the property line between the school site and the fire station site. And what we're dealing with, with the CTP is a line on the map. So a little bit of shifting, you can never predict exactly where that would go, but it would be a 60-foot right-of-way dedication that would be required. So even though you're seeing a line on a map, think of a much thicker line when you're trying to envision what those impact. With all that in mind, staff is recommending that we remove that portion of Markham Drive extension between. That recommendation for a number. Markham Drive that we're talking about provides limited additional townwide. There's also an east-west connection planned in the form of a private street between 54 that there is a private street going through the northern part of the property and then connecting out. That private street is also contemplated to be constructed. Not a public road, but it's a private street, but it does still provide some east-west connection. Change conditions have altered the anticipated type of development in the area. Will allow for the creation of more usable parkland for the community. That connectivity between the properties and to the surrounding roadways could still be achieved. Did discuss this proposed amendment. Access and he was. requirements in the fire code for multiple points. That he did not have concerns with. So again, what is before you for consideration tonight is Resolution 2022. Drive and again, it's that portion of Markham Drive.
Quick background question on the future high school. What is the capacity of that potential?
Site is not large enough to.
I had another quick question. If you wouldn't mind going back to the map as a follow-up to that question, could you show us kind of on the roadway where the ingress and egress would be for traffic coming in and out of that school? How that would be accommodated?
So this road along the north side of the property, this private street is still contemplated. On that. So again, they had their landscape architect do this for feasibility. But they're going to really get into the details of the design, accesses and where building and parking.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
The only question I have, I mean, obviously this is schematic and you were saying you could do things with the fire code. I mean, there's a sort of back section here of the Wake Tech property that's now hanging off with no connection to anything. Am I correct? Like at the, I can't remember what building it was, but the large parking deck or building? Right, so there was going to be a roundabout, right? And so now it looks to me like the park, is there going to still be a roundabout there? Surely not, or is there?
Oh, let me see if it's in one of these. Are a lot more detailed. So that building that you're referencing is really located about where my cursor is. And there is actually a parking lot that we. Already constructed.
Right, okay, I remember seeing that.
That parking lot that's on the yellow property that the school system. But the portion of the parking lot that's in green is contemplated. Have that building that you're referencing, access drive next to it going back.
So I guess to, so if people from, I mean, it's good that the fire department's looked at this because I guess my other concern would be when people start to use that road to cut through from Paramount out and then they want to put speed bumps on it, what happens with the fire response then?
We'll tell you, we haven't had any discussions about speed bumps.
Right, that's not going to happen until it becomes an issue.
Access by emergency vehicles.
So you're saying really there's a possibility that street won't connect, won't be available to the public? Okay, I mean, if everyone is okay, okay, but it just seems like there's a pretty big loss of connectivity locally to that one area. But, you know, if that's what needs to happen, I suppose. Any other questions? So then I would like to ask for any public comments for this particular item. If there is anyone that wants to comment on that, please come up to the mic. Okay, no public comment. So do I have a motion?
Anyone?
Yeah, sure, I'll make a, I'll make a motion. I find that the proposed amendment to ordinance 2015-010 to be consistent with the town of Morrisville's comprehensive plan and I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance 2022-364-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving an amendment to ordinance 2015-1010 to the approved zoning map amendment for Wake Technical Community College located on a property commonly known as 433.
Hold on one second. And this is actually for the next item, correct?
I read the wrong one?
I mean, we need to word this a little bit differently for the CTP doing up.
Sorry. I make a motion that's a resolution 2022-396-0 approving an amendment to the comprehensive transportation plan to remove a portion of existing Markham Drive extension.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Hey there. So obviously I'm a new face. My name is Thomas Lloyd, so I'm happy to be here tonight. Just a little history on me. I started here in August, so I'm still pretty, pretty green here in Morrisville. I come here from the town of Southport and I was there for six years. But I'm happy to be up in Morrisville and to, you know, live well and live connected with you guys. I hear that's the, the.
It's not connected to the beach.
That's true, but it's connected to a lot of stuff. But let's get started here.
All right, sorry about that. So just for a little bit of context with this amendment, back in 2015, there was a zoning map amendment that was approved for the Wake Tech property at 433 Knowledge Drive. And at the time, that approval was subject to a number of conditions. One of the most important ones that we're dealing with tonight being condition, condition one, and that condition established a list of permitted uses on the property. And to facilitate the partnership that Wake Tech, as well as the town of Morrisville and Wake County, you know, where we're working together on this project to have a high school as well as a future fire station on the property, Wake Tech is requesting to amend those permitted uses on those properties to also include emergency services, high schools, middle schools and elementary schools. So really the main reason for this amendment to the conditions of that ordinance is to amend those permitted uses to, to allow those, those uses that I just referenced. So this is an amendment to ordinance 2015-010. As you can see here up here, this is the Wake Tech property. The current zoning is conditional office as well as institutional and the current land use is a college and then, you know, undeveloped land up in this area. So they are the owner, they are the petitioner as well. The total site acreage is 92.11 acres and the future land use plan shows this as institutional. So we already talked about that. It is inside of the corporate limits as well. If you look at the current zoning to the north, it is office institutional and regional activity center. To the east, it is office institutional. To the south, it is transit oriented development and office institutional. And then to the west, it is low density residential and park screenway and open space. Future land use plan, like I said earlier, shows this as an institutional use. The preferred uses include government buildings, offices, emergency response facilities, schools and higher education facilities. So all of those permitted uses would fit into that, into that area. So I'll go into the revisions to the conditions on this ordinance a little bit. As you can see down here, we are adding emergency services, high schools, middle schools and elementary schools. Really that is, you know, the main, the main change that we're making there. So we can have those types of uses on that site. There's a lot of language here in this area, but essentially all this condition is doing is clarifying that this parking condition, which comes from the previous ordinance, is strictly for colleges and universities only and will not be triggered for the high school or the fire station or the emergency service use. Just with this one in particular, you know, once they get to a certain amount of square feet, they will have to build a parking deck on that site. So we just wanted to clarify and make it clear that that will not be the case with the, with the other uses. And then it's, it's really the same thing for, for condition number five, that it will not be required for that, for that use. And then here it kind of shows the sketch plan that Michelle referenced earlier. You can see the fire station up here as well as, you know, the high school in this area or whatever school it might be in that area. So staff recommends approval of the requested amendment to the ordinance. We feel this way because it's consistent with the land use plan. It, it would allow for uses that are compatible with the uses in the surrounding area. And, you know, just that it would be compatible with the developments in the area and it would result in a logical and orderly pattern. So really your main action item here is to, you know, adopt a statement of consistency on the, the ordinance that is in your packet there attached to, to approve or to amend an ordinance that approved a zoning map amendment for Wake Tech, looking on, located on properly, properly known as 433 Knowledge Drive. So I'm happy to, to answer any questions if you all have any. Just let me know.
I have a question. Well, first of all, welcome. I'm glad to have you. Can you go back to the parking language?
Sure.
Please?
Which one?
The parking language for the.
Page seven, I think. Okay.
There you go. Yeah. So for everything that's going to be there other than the college, where is the parking going to be and what is the capacity going to be?
Did you say how will the parking be built or?
No, where will it be and what will the capacity be for the uses other than the college?
Yeah, so I mean, that would just be governed by, you know, our typical UDO standards for parking based on whatever the use is. I would have to look specifically to see what the use is for high schools. I do not know that at this moment, but it would, it would just be governed in our site plan process by what the parking allotment is for both schools as well as emergency services uses.
Just looks, just looking at the sketch, looks very tight.
Sure, sure. And that, and that, and that's part of it too, is that just is a sketch. So, you know, once they start doing the engineering and, you know, going through the site plan submittal process, you know, we'll definitely have a lot better information to go off of then.
Thank you.
No, I had the same stress over parking lot. I'm thinking you're going up, it's going to be a little tight tower going high.
Sure.
Any, any other questions? Do we have any public comment on this item? Apparently we do not. So then I will entertain a motion.
I find the proposed amendment to ordinance 2015-010 to be consistent with the town of Morrisville's comprehensive plan and I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance 2022-364-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving an amendment to ordinance 2015-010 that approved the zoning map amendment for Wake Technical Community College located on property commonly known as 433 Knowledge Drive. Further, I find that the proposed amendment of ordinance 2015-010 is reasonable, consistent with the comprehensive plan and is in the public interest because the requested amendment of ordinance 2015-010 is consistent with the 2022 land use plan and the requested amendment of ordinance 2015-010 allows for uses that are compatible with uses in the surrounding area.
I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Thank you. And welcome.
Thank you all. You haven't seen the last of me.
Let's hope. And we can move on to the next item.
Would you like me to go ahead and jump right into the next one?
Sure. So this is a pretty long item because I was reading through earlier. So I think we probably want to have, do you want to build in like any question breaks just so we can do it a little more early fashion? But I guess what is your? But I guess what is your preference?
I'll go ahead. I'll provide a little bit of information. We do have our consulting team here with us as well, who will be giving some of the presentation, and we can also figure out what are kind of those best points as well. So I'll go ahead and start. Danielle Kittredge, and we are having a work session regarding affordable housing plan implementation, some preliminary design options. Just as a reminder, in 2019, the town did adopt an affordable housing plan. There was a variety of recommendations in it. In early 2021, Town Council had a retreat, discussed areas that they were interested in pursuing from those options, and then later in 2021, did an RFQ that went out to look for consultant to help us with some of this work. And then in early 2022, we did enter into a contract with HRNA to help with this work. So there are two components. The first one is looking at UDO incentives to help with affordable housing and encourage that. And then the second item is looking at options for a potential public employee housing choice program. So we're talking about those two items tonight in kind of the purview of the Planning and Zoning Board. We'll be looking for recommendations on sort of those preliminary options or directions with the UDO incentives. We are providing for context the public employee housing choice program to kind of understand a little bit more of the whole package of affordable housing, and do welcome comments on that. We don't need like a formal recommendation since it is more of a budgetary type of item that goes to the Town Council. So with that, I'll go ahead and introduce with HRNA, we do have Sarah Kirk as well as Hassan Pereira here, and I'll go ahead and let Sarah kick it off. And if you want to discuss as well a little bit, we do have kind of the two items, and if there are certain breakpoints that we want to do with discussion. But there is a lot of material, so some of it may be good to go through some of it, take some notes of things you want to go back to, because we can definitely go off on a lot of different tangents on this and sort of digesting a bunch of information all at once.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I definitely will pause throughout, because there's a lot to take in, and some of it's more for informational purposes, but happy to pause throughout for some questions. So, thank you. As Danielle said, I'm Sarah Kirk with HRNA Advisors, and we've been hired by the town to help think about options and opportunities to implement a couple of the key recommendations that came out of the Affordable Housing Plan. So, our presentation today basically covers first just an overview of the work that we're doing and the context for why we're doing it. And then, as Danielle mentioned, we're going to provide brief updates on both the incentive zoning policy work we've been doing, as well as the housing choice program work, and then talk a little bit about next steps for the project. HRNA is a real estate, economic development, and public policy consulting firm. We have offices here in Raleigh, as well as in New York, DC, Atlanta, Dallas, and Los Angeles. We work basically across a wide range of topic areas that sit at the intersection between the public and private sectors. So that includes working for municipalities and helping to figure out how to incentivize the kind of development that you want to see, as well as working on the developer side to advocate for incentives or other approvals. So we really, we think that doing each part of that work helps us do a better job at the other part. Our housing practice in particular addresses housing affordability both at the strategy level, so we write housing plans and strategies. We help to design and implement those programs and policy changes to align housing priorities with market realities and policy practices. And we also help at the transaction level. We have a team, I won't introduce everybody, Hassan and I are here in the room today, but a team that's worked on affordable housing both in Wake County and nationally, as well as we are supported in this work by Code Studio. They're another team that has a lot of experience here in North Carolina, and they're helping us with the UDO-specific changes and understanding the land use and regulatory side of things. As Danielle mentioned, the work that we're doing is jointly about a review of the UDO and design or evaluation of feasibility of an incentive zoning policy, and also the design of a framework for a public employee housing choice program. We're in Phase One of the work right now. That's been, first off, primarily doing a lot of markets review, understanding the UDO, understanding the market, talking to developers to think about where there might be opportunities for each of these programs. And we're currently in a process of analyzing potential scenarios for both programs. So we want to talk to you about those preliminary scenarios that we've evaluated in partnership with town staff before finalizing those, a recommended scenario or a set of scenarios for potentially implementing. Phase Two of the work, if approved, would be defining the administrative needs, drafting the UDO changes, and really putting pen to paper to make those policies happen. So for the incentive zoning policy, the town recognizes the need to produce more affordable housing. We understand you're interested in ways to produce affordable housing that don't necessarily require public subsidy. Public subsidy is an important tool for affordable housing, but land use and incentives can also help to increase the development of affordable housing, either housing that is restricted to particular incomes or housing that just through a supply side is at a more stabilized price point. The plan specifically calls out the need to help households, the lowest-earning households, and we, in our market scan, have really found that that seems to be where there is need. So just to go quickly through a little bit of understanding who's in need of affordable rental housing in Morrisville, or I'm going to talk first about rental affordability and then about homeownership. So townwide incomes have grown about 23% since 2016. That's lagging behind rental growth. COVID in particular has really pushed this even since 2020. Rents have continued to go up. There's been a 25% increase since 2020. So that's an area where for market rate, as well as for income-restricted housing, there is a challenge. When we looked at cost burden, and this was a way to really understand what are renters at various incomes in Morrisville experiencing, what we saw is that you've had a growth in renters at all income levels, but what really stood out to us was almost all of the renters in Morrisville with incomes below $50,000 are housing cost burden. That means they're spending more than 30% of their incomes on housing. So you have almost no rental housing serving those low-income renters. And it's easy to do the math, in more, in Wake County, area median income's right around $100,000, so $50,000, 50% of your AMI. Morrisville has added a lot of rental housing to accommodate that increasing renter demand in the last 10 years, so you're keeping track. The market's delivering the housing, almost enough housing. However, we did note that the town does not have any new low-income housing tax credit units that have been built in the last 20 years. When we looked at home sales, we saw a similar story. Housing was, our homeownership was relatively affordable in Morrisville, but it was growing, and really, since COVID, it's taken off. I don't think that's a surprise to anybody in this room, but there's been almost a 60% increase in the median home price in Morrisville in the last two years, which means that whereas homeownership was previously accessible to households earning 70% to 80% of the area median income, it's really not accessible to even median-income households today. And when we look at homeownership distribution by income, you can see pretty starkly that the entry point for homeownership really seems to be an income around $100,000. In addition to doing that market scan, we talked to developers. The main point of those conversations was both to kind of provide additional context about the market, but also to understand how Morrisville's land use regulations, practices influence what gets built, and understand what, where there might be some opportunities to use zoning as a way to provide incentives to produce affordable housing. Some of the main things that came out of that were specific data points that helped us when we developed our feasibility scenarios, which I'm going to talk about in a little bit, but I wanted to let you know we did have those conversations. And some of the things that we heard outside of those key data points were things like, you know, in general, the town is pretty helpful at helping developers navigate the UDO. There's less undeveloped land in the town. Again, I don't think that's a surprise. That's making developers have to think about new development types and new approaches to developing in Morrisville. And one thing that, you know, we haven't really been talking about with Morrisville, but that we heard from some of the developers that we spoke with, was that donated public land, or rather, the option to donate public land to a third party to provide affordable housing has been one mechanism that they've used in the past to provide affordable housing. So that is, the developer didn't develop the affordable housing directly, but they donated a portion of their site to somebody who would. So again, when we think about, you know, there has been a lot of multifamily development in the last few years, but we understand that there might not be many opportunities or many sites that continue to be available, particularly because in its zoning and its land use map, the town has been fairly prescriptive about where multifamily is going to be allowed. So I think it remains to be seen whether that volume of development keeps up, but I think there's still some opportunities, and there's still an appetite to develop that kind of housing in Morrisville. And so there's a real opportunity to think about how to make some of it affordable to lower-income renters. When we looked at what's getting built in Morrisville, we looked at three primary types of multifamily development. Those were mid-rise apartments, garden-style, and small lot. Small lot infill projects are rarer, but I think you're going to see more of them in Morrisville in the future, again, because it's, there's, the need to make use of those smaller sites. Garden-style require a lot of land, but on the other hand, mid-rise, while they can be more compact or a little bit more expensive to build, because typically, they include some structured parking. When we looked on the single-family side, we saw that there has been some townhome development in recent years, or attached single-family development. And so one of the things we want to talk with you about today is, is that an opportunity to think about how to deliver affordable single-family product in the future? We understand there's some hesitation there, but it's something that we wanted to talk about, because it is something that the development community seems interested in producing, and it is a way to produce single-family housing more cheaply and more affordably. And that really is shown in, when we look at the sizes and the price points, right? So townhomes are smaller on average than single-family detached housing being developed in Morrisville and elsewhere. And when we looked at the average sales price, and now, this is an average over the last five years, so since COVID, these numbers have gone up, but, you know, you can see townhomes over the last five years averaged sales price around $370,000, which would have been affordable to owners around 60% to 80%, 70% to 80% of the median income, whereas, single-family detached housing was closer to $500,000 and more affordable, as I said, to buyers at 90% to 100% of the median income. Even without any kind of subsidy, even without any kind of income restriction, townhomes are naturally a more affordable product. So we just looked at what's being built in the market. I think one of the things that has brought us to this conversation today is that you can't solve the affordability situation in Morrisville or anywhere just through density, right? Solving, increasing housing supply can help to stabilize housing prices, particularly when there's a constrained supply, particularly when population is growing, but it's not going to meet the needs of lower-income households. So we want to look at incentive zoning opportunities that would produce some affordable housing that is affordable to those lower-income households, those households that can't currently find housing in Morrisville, while still allowing for and not constraining the supply of market-rate multifamily housing. So when we look at scenarios for incentive zoning, we basically want to think about balancing out the affordability that we get with the developer profits. So we know you can't do, North Carolina law does not allow for required or mandatory inclusionary zoning. This is, we're talking about an incentive zoning program. So what we're basically saying is, in exchange for a certain number of affordable units, we're going to make certain concessions on the zoning so that you, the developer, have an incentive to produce those affordable units. So that means things like reducing development costs, either through a fee rebate or administrative approval, things that help, things get approved more quickly, or increasing their potential for cash flow through things like a density bonus or reduced development standards, like reducing parking requirements, things like that. I'm going to pause right there, because next I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the scenarios that we looked at for multifamily housing and then for single-family, but I just wanted to pause there and see, does that make sense? Are there any questions at this point?
With regards to reducing the development cost and the various means of doing that down there, there's a lot of statistics in here, a lot of graphs in charge, which I appreciate, and you might be getting into it soon, but have these, you know, programs that we're talking about, have they been proven successful in towns that look like Morrisville?
That's a good question. We have done these, we've developed both mandatory and voluntary inclusionary zoning in a range of communities. I can't, off the top of my head, come up with one that's sort of a suburban community, kind of like Morrisville. I'd say the biggest issue, regardless of what kind of community we're talking about, is really about getting this balance right. So, you know, we've seen policies designed badly where they really grind development to a halt if they're mandatory, because people would just rather develop somewhere else. Or we've seen places where an incentive zoning program that wasn't mandatory, that was optional, nobody takes advantage of it, because there's not enough upside for them to do it. And where we've seen it really work well is when it gets this balance right, and that's what we're hoping to do for Morrisville. I think this is a new tool, and it's a tool that smaller communities haven't pursued as much, because either it wasn't available to them, or they weren't in a position where they really needed to be thinking about providing affordability in this way. And so I, you know, we can do some additional looking to try and find precedent examples of communities around the size of Morrisville, but I think honestly, that these smaller communities that are facing these higher population growth pressures like Morrisville are really just on the cutting edge of realizing that you need to kind of look under all of the stones to figure out how to address the affordability challenges. And so I think Morrisville might be kind of out on the leading edge of pursuing this in a thoughtful way.
With regards to the different housing types, the garden apartments, townhomes, infills, were there other alternatives that were considered by all of you, and just, no, that's not going to work, and if so, why wouldn't it work?
Well, we didn't, those were pretty much the typologies that we saw that were being developed in the market, and I think we didn't, you know, in conversation with staff, we didn't have sufficient enthusiasm, let's say, to look at sort of high-rise development. We didn't, it didn't seem like a typology that, A, anybody was trying to build in Morrisville, or that, B, Morrisville was terribly interested in pursuing. So we didn't look at those highest densities of multifamily.
Just a reminder, everybody get a little closer to the mic, so she can...
Just one follow-up on this chart specifically. Get the reduced development cost side of it. When you look at the other side, specifically around length of affordability, can you define that and just talk through that process a little bit?
Absolutely. So typically, if we're requiring that a certain number of units be affordable to, say, renters at 60% of AMI, for how long? So low-income housing tax credits come with a compliance period of 30 years. That's a pretty typical range. And so you would be recording an affordability covenant, saying that these, 10% of these units, or however we're defining it, will be maintained affordable at this income level for a period of 30 years. Some places ask for longer affordability, compliance. Some ask for less, but I think 30 is pretty much the starting point. But we have seen some places asking for effectively permanent affordability, 90, 90 years, and that does reduce the potential, you know, if the developer were planning to sell the property at 15 years to somebody who was going to own it for a long time, it impacts their resale value.
I was just wondering if we could maybe take a step back, because we're talking about a lot of complex levers here to, you know, get to where we have affordable housing options in Morrisville. And I think all of us want affordable housing options in Morrisville. But I worry, you know, I see, my brother lives in Virginia, he lives in Northern Virginia, and there, they've got a lot of different rental options that are based on your income. So if you're in a certain bracket, maybe if your household makes $30,000 to $45,000 a year, you're eligible to live in these apartments, but if you make over 45, you're not, or if you make under 30, you're not. And I think what it creates is really sort of exacerbating the problem and sort of creating classism in housing and where people live. classism in housing and where people live. And so I was, I was hoping you could maybe take a step back and look to where you were talking about the supply and the demand. Because an apartment complex that is maybe 250 luxury units built today in 2022, 20 years from now, are going to be relatively affordable. Those aren't going to be considered luxury 20 years from now. And you had said something about how supply isn't going to solve the problem, and I was wondering if you could maybe elaborate on that a little bit. And you said building up isn't going to solve the problem, and I wanted you to elaborate on that as well, because understanding the layout of Morrisville, you know, I saw somewhere in our packet, there was talking about amending the UDO to allow for more high-rise structures for these multifamily units. And I think, you know, we're really limited on being able to build out in Morrisville. And so I think looking at options to build up should certainly be on the table. And so I was hoping you could maybe go back and talk a little bit more about the supply and demand, aside from these different levers and tax credits and things that we can do.
Sure. Yeah, and I'll take what I think I heard, questions about sort of quality, questions about supply, and questions about height, so I'm going to kind of go in that order. Typically, when we design products or programs like this, we want to put in some sort of requirements that the affordable units are of comparable quality and distributed throughout the building. We've seen cases, I think in New York, there was a case where some, they built a separate entrance for the low-income units from the, you know, so we don't want that, right? We want these units to feel like units that are in the building. We're not creating like a special subset of the building that is for the lower-income households. I think the second thing you asked about was about why supply couldn't address these challenges. So developers are going to develop at the top of the market. That's how development operates. So you're not, you're going to get the highest rent premium that the developer can get, that's what they're going to build, unless you're putting in some sort of subsidy or some sort of incentive or some sort of concession, asking them to accept a lower rent. So that's really what we're talking about here. And when you do that, the way that affordable housing works in this country, you have to define an income level that will be eligible for that. In, in markets that have a lot of older rental housing, a lot of what we're talking about is how do we preserve that housing, because it is what we call naturally affordable, or naturally occurring affordable housing. You know, that 20, 30-year-old product, that Class C product, it is serving those 80% AMI households or the 60% AMI households, and how do we make sure that it's not at risk of a speculative investor coming in, putting some money into it, putting some new fixtures in, and then renting it at the top of the market, closer to the top of the market? In Morrisville, you don't have a lot of that older product, and as we saw, you don't have enough product today that is serving or that is housing affordably people, renters with incomes at $50,000 and below. So you need something to create housing for those households. And again, a market-rate developer is not going to provide that. Does that answer your question, I guess?
It does. Would you agree, though, that more supply, in that if there's, you know, if there's five different options for multifamily complexes in the, in the Morrisville area, you know, and that gets increased to 10 different options, all of a sudden, you have five more players in the game who are going to be competing to try to bring in those 10? Morrisville is expanding rapidly, as you know, as you know the numbers. And so, but it sounds like you're saying that that doesn't solve the problem.
You're never going to serve people at 60% AMI and below in a market like this with market-rate development. It's the, the costs of construction are not going to support 60% AMI rents without subsidy. So, yeah, building more can help to accommodate that growth, it can help keep rents from growing up as quickly as they have been, and it might provide more housing to those households at 80% AMI, at 100% AMI, the ones who, some of them can find affordable housing in Morrisville today, but maybe not all of them, but you're not going to serve the lowest-income renters.
Certainly. I think, you know, something you said about, I think the term you used was naturally occurring affordable housing, and I think that's something that, you know, when, when we're allowing for multifamily complexes to be built in Morrisville today, we are providing affordable housing for the future in that, as you said, you know, 20 or 30 years from now, that is de facto affordable housing.
But yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, I was just clarifying that. Thank you.
My comment would be, other cities, they displace lower-income housing with luxury housing, and we didn't do that here. So my question is still, where is the low-income housing? We're a small city, so if people are moving here that can't afford to live here, why would we then construct to accommodate them? That just doesn't make sense. So if we're looking at, our objective is to expand for our current and future needs. If we have 15 buildings coming in for an R and D park, 15 different buildings, those people are 24/7, because you can't do microbiology eight hours a week, why would they want to drive eight hours or a couple hours to go to Raleigh? Why wouldn't we want them living here? When we look at our housing needs, those are huge industries moving into Morrisville. That's who we should be accommodating. So why would we then build and say, well, drive over to Morrisville and we're going to build some affordable, or put it out by the airport? We had talked about the airport overlay, which would be an area that wouldn't have balconies, but it just seems we're putting an awful lot of effort to build housing for people that didn't previously live here, that were going to then move into this community, and we have to decide who gets the advantage of that housing.
I'm, I haven't done a full, we haven't done a full housing needs assessment for this project. This is, we're designing this particular program, but I do want to take a little bit of, I want to contradict you a little bit. What we've seen in Wake County as a whole, and what we see, I think, in this chart for Morrisville, is that the people who are moving here are high-income. What they're doing is driving up housing prices so that the people who lived here previously now can't afford the housing that they have. So when we look at the change in renters by income, a huge increase in renters with incomes over $75,000. That, they have housing, they have housing here. The people who don't have housing that they can afford are those lower-income renters. And they were here before. There's been a bit of an increase, not a huge increase, even when we look at renters with household, with incomes between $35,000 and $50,000, there was a decrease. They might have given up and moved elsewhere. But those are people who live in Morrisville today, those are people who lived in Morrisville 20, in 2010, who can't afford the housing that they have. Does that answer your question?
I don't think they work in Morrisville, so maybe that makes sense. I, you know, that, I'm just looking at what we're building in Morrisville. So as industry changes, and we've gone from a lot of greenery and a smaller town to being a pharmaceutical hub, we have people from all over the world that are moving here, and for an R and D lab, you want access to drive to the office at 2:00 in the morning. You need that proximity to drive to work. So I don't want to displace those people when we have 15 R and D buildings coming into Morrisville to say, we have luxury housing here, but you can't live in that luxury housing because we're letting 10% of it go to somebody who's working in Cary or somewhere else. So that's where my confusion is, is that, you know, certainly, we want to have the right numbers, but when we originally talked about this, we thought maybe something by the airport overlay, not at Bristol Creek or in one of the luxury places where we can't accommodate the people who want to work here. But that's just my feedback.
I think this is for every, I mean, we're talking about everywhere in the town here, so I mean, that would apply to that area, but, I mean, the guy that fixes the equipment also has to go in at 2:00 in the morning. I think the idea, and the teachers, and, you know, as we get further into this, we'll talk about that, but I think there are enough of those to try to do that do work in Morrisville. I mean, plus, you know, look at right now, Cary's building 400, you know, they're allowing 400 units to be built right over here. I mean, they're very intertwined, so we can't just say, oh, it stops at Morrisville border. I mean, that's sort of into what you're saying, but there's a lot of interplay between the two areas, too.
Because I'm looking at it, somebody has to drive to get to work, and I look at it in terms of the industry that's going to be here, who needs to be close to the office, but that's just opinion of people who work in industry.
And I think, I think later in the presentation, you get into some of the public sector and the
Yeah, there's
Town employees, the teachers.
Teachers, aides, firefighters,
And the surveys they talk about, yeah.
Healthcare workers, all kinds of people who work in Morrisville or who serve Morrisville, retail workers. But I, you know, I, I think as a starting point, the town's affordable housing plan says we need affordable housing that is, that serves low-income renters in, and low-income populations in Morrisville. So I, you know, we haven't been brought in to reevaluate the town's affordable housing strategy, so I don't want to get into that, but I do want to definitely make sure that I'm explaining what we're trying to do or what we're trying to help you do clearly. So I, if it's okay, I'll move on to
Just, I just got a quick follow-up on that, because just for point of clarity, so I think there was a target population. I thought, my understanding of this wasn't designed generally open to everybody, there was actually groups that this was going to be targeted to, whether it be government, you know, worker, town workers, firefighters, police, that was a very targeted group.
Yeah.
If that's, that's correct?
I'm not an expert on the
Okay.
I mean, we read the plan, but I can't
Assuming that that, that is correct, and there was a target group, is that accurate?
We had discussed this project with town council at retreat a couple of years ago. The direction that we received was to look at UDO incentives for affordable housing. So for this portion, there was not a target market, and I know that's something that the HRNA firm had asked us about, is there a target market? At this point, there is not. That could be part of this discussion, if we think there should be. With the community housing servant program, there was. That, very specifically, the council indicated that they were interested in evaluating that program for town staff and school system staff, but for this UDO incentive portion, there was not.
Okay. The reason I went down that path is if there was that target market, then couldn't we go a different route and do it by salary adjustment across the board, as opposed to putting in a program like that? Is that an alternate solution to the problem that would serve a broader base?
But that does come into play in the, in the public employee program, yes.
Yeah, that would be an option, yeah, okay.
So, we looked at both, we looked at options for incentive zoning for both multifamily and single-family. So I'm going to talk about the multifamily options that we looked at first, have a little bit of conversation, and then talk about the single-family options that we looked at. So as I mentioned, we looked at mid-rise, garden-style, and small-lot infill development. What we found at the market rate, garden-style and mid-rise are both feasible. Mid-rise, as I mentioned, because of the costs of structured parking, is a little bit harder to work, but it does work, developers are building it here in Morrisville. Small-lot infill is, is more challenging, and for that reason, we didn't really consider it very, in very much detail for the feasibility of the incentive zoning. It's, it's possible if there were small-lot infill projects coming in on a case-by-case basis that required a rezoning or some other approval, that the town might develop a policy to negotiate for that, but it seems like because of the, the specific nuances and the challenges of those developments, that that's, wasn't something that we saw a great opportunity to pursue for incentive zoning. And then on the affordability side, we looked at both 15%, setting aside, so there's a lot of, I'm going to say the word percent a lot, and I apologize if it gets confusing, I will repeat myself. So we looked at a set aside of 15% of the units being affordable to renters at 80% of the area median income, and 10% of units affordable at 60% of the area median income. For garden-style construction, actually, the costs are low enough that it's almost feasible without any subsidy or incentives. It's definitely not feasible for mid-rise or for the small lot. Now, of course, market-rate developers are not going to produce, they're not going to set aside 10% of their units to be affordable at 60% of area median income without some sort of incentive or inducement. The point is that it should be a relatively easy lift to incentivize that development because for garden-style in particular, at least the costs to construct are low enough, as long as land's available, that it's possible. For mid-rise construction, we're going to need a bit more on the incentive side in order to make those work. Does that make sense? We looked at a broad range of potential incentives. These are the ones we want to talk about today. We did look at some others that didn't, didn't seem to do much or seemed kind of duplicative with these, but we spent a lot of time talking with the town about which incentives to be looking at. We understand there was interest in looking at tree protection. That one didn't really have all that much impact, it was relatively minimal, so in general, we didn't really consider that one. The public space in Lufy, either a 50% or 100% rebate, again, I know that's, that can be a contentious one, but that's a big cost for development in a place like Morrisville, and so that was another opportunity to incentivize development without really changing too much the structure of what gets developed. We looked at density increases, so increasing building heights by one story or about a 20% height increase does result in a slight increase in financial performance, both for garden-style and for mid-rise. And finally, we looked at reducing parking minimums, either a 50%, I think, up, up to a 50% reduction in parking minimums. It's possible that beyond that, it could, reducing parking could reduce rents or reduce the potential for rent. If people want to have extra parking spots, they might not be as interested in renting in that development, and so we didn't look really beyond that. But I think particularly because the TOD areas are one of the areas in which the town wants to allow more multifamily housing, it's possible that those TOD areas, it might be very appropriate to have a somewhat of a part, reduction of the parking minimum. So as I mentioned, garden-style construction required only a modest level incentives in order to produce affordable units. So really, a 50%, up to 100% of the public space in Lufy could produce either that 50% at 80% or 10% at 60%. Now, we looked at both 80% and 60%, I should say. We heard that the town was most interested in rental affordability at 80% of area median income. However, as I mentioned in that market scan, we saw the biggest need at $50,000 of income and below, which is right around 50% to 60% of your area median income. And so that's why we looked at a 10% set aside for 60% of AMI as well, because those are really the renters who aren't currently being served in the market. When we looked at mid-rise, as I mentioned, mid-rise requires a little bit more in order to make it feasible, and part of that's because of the cost to produce the structured parking. So reducing a parking minimum for mid-rise by 50% goes a long way. That, that would, that would really make the affordability scenarios for mid-rise development feasible. If 50% felt like too big of a reduction, you could reduce parking by 25% to 35% as well as providing that building height increase and a public space rebate. So really, when we looked at that combination, 35% reduction in parking minimum, 20% height bonus, and a full rebate of the public space in Lufy, that really makes all of these scenarios, again excluding the small-lot infill, work pretty well. The 10% at 60% option for mid-rise is a little bit iftier, but it works. So one of the things that we want to get feedback from you all today is, you know, which of these scenarios feel doable or feel palatable? Do we need to revise the way that we're thinking about the potential for incentives? And I think in particular, are we trying to emphasize mid-rise over garden-style? In which case, should we provide greater incentives and maybe reduce the incentives for garden-style in a way to incentivize mid-rise development?
Can you go back to page 23? Sure. So I, I sort of heard that we can't like get density out of our, density's not going to solve the problem.
Well, so density in building height increase was the primary option that we looked at. We talked about other things that effectively relate to density, like straight sort of unit density increases, but building height was really the main way
Not on its own.
What was it?
She's saying not on its own, this is trading density for something else.
Three of these things are increasing the density of the units, correct?
Right, but, but in trade for something else, not just in a vacuum by themselves. That's the difference.
Okay, maybe I'm not understanding, at these, at least the first three are all about increasing the density of the buildings themselves?
No, I think really the, the building height is the primary one. I mean, so the, the tree protection requirements may be a bit, but, but the, in Lufy, because we're not, we're talking about just the in Lufy, not the, well, I suppose if you're assuming as a baseline that they're going to be providing the public space directly, then yes, it is, it is a form of added density. But yeah, we didn't look at it as a dwelling units per acre number, we looked at it in terms of building height, next to construction and things like that.
So, yeah, that's, I guess the part of the question was, you have, you know, three things that we're, in other parts of the plan, we want. These are all takeaways. The fourth one around reducing parking minimum is, do we have the infrastructure to kind of support that building with not parking? So I, I don't know that these are kind of where we want to go or even feasible.
Feasible from a marketability standpoint, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, so if I'm going to move into a unit that doesn't have a parking, I'm going to need infrastructure to support that. I don't know that we have that within the town construct to do that right now. These other things are part of our plan that we actually want. We're going to be taking that, reducing, increasing density potentially more
Some areas.
Some areas. Just some, but it's, I guess that concern is from an organization design component, we're going to have, maybe trading one problem We're going to have, maybe trading one problem to get three, right? Do we, are we set up for the services that are going to be needed, the roads that need to the schools, or any, all of that for, to increase that?
Right. And I think that's, that's part of what we're, we're trying to understand here and, and wanted to, to talk through with you.
I have a, maybe to, to answer Tim's question, I'd be curious if some staff going to density about 50% rebate on the public space in Lufy, how many developers have actually done the public space component for development? And, I mean, are any?
Not many. Almost everyone does the payment in lieu.
So I don't think that really enters into the equation. And then I'll also add that as far as the reducing parking minimums, at least, I think it's, it's fair to say that people at the 60 to 80% A M I, they have normally like one car families, I believe. So that, that also factors in when you think about the reducing parking minimums.
And again, if we're talking about multifamily in the T O D areas in particular, transit is coming. It's another option for households living in those areas.
Why aren't we considering smaller footprint? We have really large footprint of condos and apartments around here. And somehow it's become the norm in North Carolina to have these vast places instead of like other cities where people live in 500 square foot. So it isn't necessarily being called out as special affordable housing, but inherently it becomes more affordable, whether you're a young professional or somebody else that needs that housing, to have that option to live in smaller units, even two bedroom units. Your calculations were based on 1,200 square foot. That's huge. I'm from Chicago. That's a, that's a luxury. You know, there's, you know, people can live in smaller places versus, you know, giving them full luxury options. Was that considered?
You're talking about setting unit size maximums?
Reducing, yeah. Reducing them, smaller options.
Yeah, we, we didn't look at a maximum unit size.
Smaller, because all your calculations are based on the average square foot of rentals in Morrisville, which are large. They would be affordable at a dollar 74, however you calculated it if it wasn't 1,200 square foot.
Yeah, we could certainly look at that. I think part of the reason why we didn't is because we based our analysis on what the market is producing currently. And if you start changing what developers can produce, then they have to go back to their design and figure out new ways to produce new kinds of products. It's certainly something that can be done, but it is, when we think about sort of the potential to hamper, not, well, not hamper supply, but the potential to incentivize developers to, to take you up on these requirements. I think, what you would have to do in that case, I think, would be, sorry, I'm speaking myself in circles for a minute. Give me just a minute. Developers are going to produce the units of the size that they think they can market, right? Would smaller units be more affordable? Yes. I'm trying, I'm just trying to think through off the top of my head, because I know we didn't look at this, but that's not really an incentive in that case. If you say you can provide, if in exchange for providing affordable units, you have to provide smaller units. That's, that's, doesn't actually, I mean, sure, they get more units, but it's, if, if we're talking about rent on a per square foot basis, it's not actually changing fundamentally the, the math of the development all that much. And in fact, they may find that there's less, less rentability or less marketability of that smaller unit if people are expecting the larger unit. So like, yes, developers could build smaller units and rent them for less money, but that's not exactly an incentive that the town can create. Am I, am I?
So we're incentivizing people of lower income to take a luxury apartment versus incentivizing them to buy what's affordable?
No, no, you're incentivizing the developer to develop some units that can be rented to low income households.
Now, I, I see, I see where you're going. They're going to market a 1,200 square foot apartment because they could sell that to anyone they can, that there's not a market for a 500 square foot apartment. I guess the, the question is then becomes the circumvention of those rules, right? So you, you get a apartment that is locked like they do in New York, it's set there. What ultimately happens, and then you have multiple folks in there. And then you kind of, so you can't control that, right? I mean, that's.
And I mean, what you could do is set smaller unit size requirements across the board and then say, as an incentive, you can provide some larger units as long as some of your units are more affordable.
Might be a way to back into it, yeah.
But that, but that's not, that would be require sort of an across the board change rather than sort of a standalone incentive.
And then I think going back to how close we are to Cary and everything else, people could just go rent an apartment somewhere else that wasn't.
Right.
We've got to be careful about pushing that. And that's happened all through the triangle. You know, 20 years ago, Cary locked development down and that pushed it to Apex. I mean, it'll move to where it naturally wants to be because people want what they want.
The market's going to, this is based on understanding what the market is producing and figuring out how to change your regulatory structures to provide the developers the opportunity to make a little bit more money in exchange for setting aside some of those units to be rented to low income households. And so making smaller units doesn't really do that from the developer's perspective. It does it from the renter's perspective and it does it from the town's perspective, but it doesn't do it from the developer's perspective.
Yeah.
It, it seems a little bit counterintuitive to me. I think it, it goes on, on page 25. I think you might have that. You know, you're reducing parking minimums and then you want to increase building height, which is just going to, I don't know that I agree with what Josh said, that most low income people have only one car. I don't know that that's an accurate assumption or not, but a lot of them will have more than one car. So we're, we're talking about increasing density but reducing parking. In a town where there's, you know, in the transit oriented districts, maybe that will work. I don't see that working in the more, you know, more urban areas of Morrisville, so to speak.
I believe in, my teammate can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're talking about a reduction of parking on a per unit basis. So you actually have to provide a little bit more parking if you're also providing an extra floor worth of units. So we're reducing the per unit amount, but also increasing the number, which is part of why you have to do several of these things at once.
Then. I just wanted to follow up on that real quick, just to make sure I'm understanding the logic here. So it sounds like reducing parking, we're working on some assumption that lower income families somehow have fewer vehicles. And I don't, I don't know if that's true or not. But it sounds like this is going to reduce the cost of living because if you pull up to your apartment and you're not able to find parking consistently every day, then that apartment, that, that dwelling is going to have less value to you. And so you're going to seek elsewhere and then the market's going to bring the cost down. So I, you know, I like where your head's at right there on like the market working itself out in that sense, but I, I worry about all these talk of restrictions and subsidies and trying to move the heavy hand of the Morrisville government to manipulate the market and maybe having an adverse effect, you know, on the families that are making 50 or 60,000 dollars a year, who are already struggling to pay their rent here right now.
Yeah. Let me answer a couple of things. So first, on assumptions about access to parking, access to transit, access to vehicles. Yes, lower income housing, lower income renters might have two cars, they might only have one, they might have one and, they might have two cars, but be willing to park one on the street because they don't use it all that much. You know, we can't speak to that exactly, but yes, this is a trade off, right? But, I apologize, I just lost my train of thought. It is a trade off, but it is a way to, again, you can, you can make some assumptions that people might be willing to live in this housing if they only have one vehicle. They might be taking the bus. It's, it's something that we want to work through with you to understand, like what, what is palatable to the town. I do want to, you said one of my like hot button phrases, so I do want to just push back on you a little bit, because you said something about the town of Morrisville manipulating the housing market. All municipalities have an impact on the housing market. You control what gets built, you control where it gets built, you control where the roads are, you control how good the schools are. All of that impacts the housing market. All of the town's decisions around land use, around development, around provision of amenities, around parks, all of that manipulates the housing market. So I think saying that, oh, we're going to build affordable housing, we're going to manipulate the housing market is a little bit unfair.
Well, I think just to, to kind of put it into perspective, and this is a little bit off topic, but I think that it, that the concept is conveyed the same. Then, you know, the number one driving force behind college tuition, which, you know, similar to the housing bubble, there's a college tuition bubble, nothing to do with planning and zoning, but I, but I think you'll get where I'm going. So the number one driving force behind increased college tuition is subsidies by the government. And so if we have on a small scale here, where Morrisville is subsidizing housing, then it's going to create higher costs for everybody else living in the town, both homeowners and renters, right? Because you're, you're inflating the market and putting, and, and putting these dollars in, they're going to push everybody else out.
I think we're getting a little bit off topic. But I, I do want to, I do want to address one other thing because there's a question about the marketability of parking. Now, we talked.
If you, if you don't mind responding to that.
I, I really.
I do think that's not really part of what we're, we're talking about right now. We're talking about implementation of a plan that the town council has already approved. But we're talking about subsidies. She's trying to, you know, at, at the next level, how to, to put that into place. So I, I'm not sure the larger sort of macroeconomic debate about what pushes the market is necessarily germane to what we're talking about.
I think you make a good point about how, you know, subsidies by the government do inflate.
But we're not, we're, this is not about subsidies right now.
But we're talking about housing affordability.
Talking about whether Morrisville should be providing affordable housing. That's already been decided through by council.
I think we're talking about how affordability is implemented, because I worry that, and I do think this is germane in that we're talking about subsidies, but I'm expressing that subsidies are going to increase the cost of living for everybody else and make it so that we actually have an adverse effect on our common goal that we all share in wanting more affordable housing in Morrisville.
I don't believe that the data supports you on that, but we're not here to debate the merits of affordable housing subsidy. And also, we're not talking about public subsidy, we're talking about zoning.
Incentivizing private development.
Incentivizing.
What I really want to say on parking, because we've been talking a lot about parking, yes, there's a trade off if you offer less parking, some people might have to make some different choices. And there is a trade off between providing some affordability and providing as much parking as anybody could possibly want, right? We did talk to developers and we did ask them, at what point does a reduction in parking mean you can charge less rent or people are less interested in renting the product that you're putting out? And what we found was at or beyond 50% reduction is when you might start to see a change in marketability. So this 25 to 30% parking minimum reduction is really well within what developers have told us should be acceptable from their perspective in the market.
Did you get into the details around assigned parking? So sometimes in, in the cities, you'll have a unit that comes specifically with one parking space, two parking space, and they separate that from the cost of rent. And then you can have a unit that's a studio apartment that doesn't have a space. And so, you know, that just, you, you know what you're getting into when you go to sign it. Have you guys looked into that?
We didn't get into that level of detail in terms of whether parking might be, you know, rented separately or rented as part of the unit. We didn't, we didn't get into that level of.
That may be an option to, if you reduce the, the parking to 50%.
Absolutely.
It just may get into a practical point.
Absolutely.
One more comment on the parking. So it looks like to me, looking at what you're showing me, that the whole garden apartment situation, I mean, one, it, it sounds like that's the lowest hanging fruit, but if we're talking about the long term, what's going to be cheaper 20 years from now, 30 years from now, you're taking up space with a garden apartment design that you wouldn't take up in other ways. So you're kind of stealing from the future for now.
Right. And I think that's part of why we want to talk about, should, you know, I think we are prepared to and we're making recommendations about, I should say, we're not really making recommendations at this point. We have some preliminary scenarios that we think are worth pursuing and are looking for feedback from you before we make any recommendations. But I think there's opportunity for both mid-rise and garden style. And I think you're seeing enough of both kinds of development that you should be thinking about incentives for both. But I do think that it's, it's worth definitely making sure that if we're designing a, a policy that incentivizes mid-rise, that it really incentivizes mid-rise.
I mean, and then the other thing is like, so are garden developers okay with the reducing parking? Because that's sort of the whole thing of a garden apartment is the, the way it's designed, that it is, that is what it is. And it seems like that's a little bit more, the people who are looking for that are looking for the parking, I would think, more than somebody in the mid-rise. But I maybe won't.
Yeah. And, and as I said, we've seen more interest in producing mid-rise housing from developers in recent years. And that's really been a lot of what's been developed recently. So it may become a moot point in 10 years, but for now, it is still part of what's getting developed here.
Is there a way to, and I don't know if this is possible, to incentivize multi-stage, like you would build a garden type now and do it in a way that they could do another building later? I, I don't know.
I have no.
That would somehow, you could, if you could design it in some way that to allow that, that would give you some credit. I, I don't know.
I think that's a great idea and I think you should talk to an engineer about it. So I'm going to move on, just with a couple more slides on multifamily. We did look at low income housing tax credit developments. We, again, are not talking about public subsidy here, but we wanted to look at what it would take to do it and whether it was possible to do Lytech in Morrisville using incentive zoning alone. Low income housing tax credits are the primary source of funding for rental units affordable at that 60% A M I and below. As I mentioned, Morrisville does not, has almost no low income housing tax credit properties. Funding for Lytech, housing developers apply for tax credits, which are allocated through the state. Private investors buy the tax credits. Typically, they also get a traditional loan as well as in most markets increasingly, especially in Wake County, you need some sort of gap financing as well to make those projects work. Wake County puts up gap financing for Lytech, but many places have found that local governments need to match that with a local loan or incentive. So we did look at this, assuming that a Lytech project came in with how, a quarter of their units affordable at 30% of the median income and three quarters at 60%, which is pretty typical for Lytech. If you were to provide some of those incentives, and if the developer were able to get a loan from Wake County, he'd still require some local subsidy from Morrisville to make that project work. So we're not here to talk about Lytech, we're not here to advocate for a Lytech gap financing program, but we did want to look at what would it take to make this work? Is this something that we can do through zoning incentives? And the answer is, is no, you can't do it through incentives alone. So that's, that's the last slide on multifamily. I think we've had a lot of discussion on multifamily. I'm going to move forward with the single family discussion, and if we want to come back to multifamily at the end, we can. Is that all right?
Yes.
Great. We heard from town staff and we understood throughout this process that we wanted to under, we wanted to look at opportunities to create affordable housing, not just through multifamily, but through single family. That was something that we talked about early and we came back to several times. So we looked at scenarios, and this was a really exciting, this is something that we, not a lot of places have done previously. There was a question about who's done this well before. Not a lot of places have done this before. So we looked at opportunities to incentivize some affordability through single family zoning. We looked at two different primary approaches to doing this. The first was a decrease in lot size, so increasing development intensity or increasing density by allowing developers of, and for this, I should say, we looked at a prototypical development of like a 12 and a half acre subdivision. So we're talking about a relatively large development. We're not talking about an individual lot of land. Currently, minimum lot sizes are at about 6,500 square feet. So we looked at various scenarios of reducing the lot size to accommodate more housing on the same 12 and a half acres. With that, we also looked at, you know, what kind of set asides would you need for things like stormwater? So we're not just packing in housing beyond what's allowed through the town zoning. And then we also wanted to look at town homes. As I mentioned, and we know that there's been some resistance, so we're not here to take a side one way or the other, but we wanted to look at whether town homes was an appropriate or a feasible way to produce some affordable housing as part of single family developments. The story that emerged was basically, it's very difficult to get a substantial amount of affordable housing by reducing lot size alone. You can do it. It wouldn't be a lot, but you can do it. And so we want to talk about the appetite for reducing lot sizes and how much affordability is really desirable. And on the town home side, we found, setting aside some land for town homes as part of a single family development, they're a lot cheaper to produce and they're smaller naturally and more affordable naturally, but still currently above what an 80% A M I household can pay. So they would still have to be sold at a bit of a discount or at a bit of a subsidy from the developer, which means that you'd also have to make other concessions in terms of lot size or other things. So we looked at that. You can get a lot more units in that way, but it's less, there's less of an upside for the developer. So we didn't want to go too far down that road before getting feedback from the Planning and Zoning Board and from council, because we understand there's some resistance there, but we think it's an important option to consider. You mentioned, we looked at both single family detached housing and townhomes, and we looked at a prototypical subdivision of 12 and a half acres. So under current zoning regulations, you can get 62 homes on this subdivision, and they would sell for about $730,000. We looked at options, two different ways to provide affordability in a subdivision development. The first was selling a portion of the homes directly to households that were income qualified. You would use probably a nonprofit partner to provide counseling and create a pipeline of income verified home buyers. And that would be at a sales price of about $325,000. The other approach we looked at was donating land to a nonprofit developer. So instead of the home builder building all of the lots, they would donate a certain number of parcels to a nonprofit developer who would then put, put housing on those lots that could be sold to 80% AMI households. This is a lot of slides, but I really just want to kind of walk you through briefly what this looks like. So we looked at three different, on the single family detached alone without any townhomes, three different options for increasing density, minimal, moderate, maximum. And the maximum pushes it all the way to 3,500 square feet lot size, which is not quite half, I mean, it's a little bit more than half rather of what's currently allowed. The minimal density increase was only a slight reduction of 5,500 square feet, and we adjusted the building sizes accordingly, just to follow kind of fit and character and So price points decrease for these homes accordingly, you get more homes out of them, not terribly surprising, but these price points, just by producing smaller homes and more of them, they're, they're more affordable, but they're still not serving those 80% AMI households. So for, in exchange for the incentive of allowing smaller lot sizes at these three different scenarios, we looked at what kind of affordability you could get either by developing and selling affordable homes or donating the lots. What we found was that minimal density increase doesn't really move the needle all that much. If you go for that moderate density increase, so reducing lot sizes to 4,500 square feet, you could ask for either 7% approximately of homes to be developed and sold to 80% AMI households, or you could ask for them to, the developer to donate about 10% of the lots to a nonprofit developer. Both of those scenarios result in a slight increase of profit to the developer over the baseline. If you want to get more than 10%, you have to go to the maximum density increase, so that's 15 homes or 20 lots. But again, that's pushing it pretty far. If that's something that the town is open to, we certainly are happy to continue to talk about that scenario, but that was really put in as sort of, how far can we push it? How much affordability can we get? So you're still looking at 13, 17%, less than 20% of your housing affordable under that maximum increase, and closer to maybe 7 to 10% for the moderate increase. When we looked at the townhome option, we looked at a 10% site allocation for townhomes. We did also look at 15%, but we, we took that out because it just, it doesn't work, and so we didn't really feel like it was worth talking about. So with a 10% allocation, so this is for that same 12 and a half acre subdivision, we've asked, we've told the developer, you can set aside 10% of your housing for townhomes that will be sold at prices that are affordable to 80%, qualified 80% AMI households, in exchange for which, A, you can build the townhomes, and B, we are going to reduce the lot size for all the other detached lots to that 5,500, that minimal density increase. So that produces 66 detached homes and 15 townhomes compared to the 62 detached homes that you got under the baseline zoning. That both produces a slight decrease in the price point of, of the single family detached housing, and also produces for you those 15 townhomes sold at 80% AMI. Again, that is at a little bit of a subsidy. So the, the thing to note here, the developer comes out about even with the baseline scenario. So we're not really providing an incentive exactly, and I think that's something we want to talk about. If this is something that's interesting, you get 15 units as, instead of the six or 12 that you got with even denser development of single family detached housing. So you get more units, but there might need to be an additional sort of pot sweetener, whether it's an administrative review, a bit of a fee rebate, something like that, just to provide a little bit more inducement to the developer to go for this scenario. But you're producing 15 entry point house, home, home ownership opportunities for 15 households at 80% of their median income. And again, that's households at around $75,000 to $80,000 of income in a year. So I'm going to pause there on the single family and see if there's any questions.
We're down with Josh this time.
No, I'm, I'm kind of musing over this, I might, might maybe come back to me in a minute.
I'm baffled why there would be homeownership in Morrisville for 70,000 to 80,000 income. Two young professionals can't afford to buy a house here. So I, why would somebody incentivize somebody to live their entire life here in a community with $700,000 homes? I mean, what's the end game there? They sell their house and they make money out of it? Why wouldn't they just rent somewhere? So just go rent an apartment? I'm, I'm confused.
You're, you're asking why a household might want to own their.
Why, why would we offer ownership? It just seems for somebody that's making 70,000, I mean, certainly if they're public service, that's one thing, but we're talking about somebody in the community, well, having a $700,000 house for.
I don't want to open up a whole debate about the value of homeownership, but I will say a couple of things. One, five years ago, an $80,000 income household could buy a home in Morrisville, today they can't. That's just a fact. Two, homeownership is the primary tool of wealth building for households in America, particularly those with moderate incomes. Three, access to wealth through homeownership is a really critical tool for long-term stability of households. It offers households the ability, stability to borrow funds to start a business, borrow funds to go to college. Having that wealth of homeownership really opens up a lot of other economic opportunities.
I understand that, but we have limited property here, and of all of the townhomes, all of the apartments, all of the condos, nobody has homeownership here. In fact, all around the country, people don't have ownership. So we're choosing the people that are going to own property in Morrisville and are 10 square miles, aren't the people that are working at the tech center, there's somebody else that's going to be incentivized to live here, and they have a home here for the rest of their life. That just seems backwards when we're building all of these rental units of the people that are working there, and young engineers, and they can't afford to buy a house here. So how, who makes that decision that this couple gets to live in this house for almost nothing? That just doesn't seem to be.
Well, in the scenario that's in front of you, compared to the baseline, previously we were going to have 62 detached homes that were affordable to very high income households. Now we have 66 homes that are affordable to moderate to high income households, really, really high income households, plus 15 units that are affordable to moderate income households. So we've actually created more opportunities for homeownership. We now have, what, 81, am I doing that right? Yeah, 81 homeownership opportunities as opposed to 62.
And if I could just jump in for a second, what we were instructed to do by the town council is work with a consultant to see what incentives we could build into our UDO to produce affordable units. That is what HRNA was charged with doing, that's what the town council expressed interest in. And we're seeing with the information they're providing, how far we would have to go based on the market to achieve that goal of producing affordable units. So now that we have that information, I, I think it's really, a lot of these are value discussions.
Exactly.
You know, are you willing to give on parking? We could dive into that a little bit more. How small a lot size do you really think is appropriate for a community? How far are you willing to go? The answer might be that it's too much. If that's the answer, we need to know that as well. If that's your recommendation, we need to know that as well. But what HRNA is presenting to you is, if you want to incentivize affordable housing, these are the levers that we have found will work, and this is how far we'd have to go with them. Is this something that you're interested in now knowing that?
Thank you, Michelle. That's, I think, a really great summary of, of the conversation that we're trying to have. I mean, I think that's, she's, she said it exactly right. We want to know what's on the table here and what should we continue to look at and what should we rule out.
From my standpoint, it would be a tiny house. It wouldn't be a 25 square foot house. So if there's some reason that we're looking at a change, it would be a small condo, if there's ownership, a tiny house. It wouldn't be a $700,000 house for half the price.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, you're not talking about selling a $750,000 house for $325,000 or whatever. You're talking about producing a house that costs less, correct?
I mean, effectively, we are, because that's what it costs to build. I mean, it's, it was actually a 60, 650.
Okay, well, just looking at the town, the 324 per unit for the townhome that you just had on this slide before, that's not a $700,000 house that's 324, that's a townhome that is less expensive, correct?
It's a townhome that, it maybe cost a little bit more than $325,000 to build it, but not that much more.
Or if it was sold, okay.
And, and, you know, smaller units absolutely are more affordable, that's just not what we were brought in to look at. We, we were brought in to look at opportunities to provide zoning incentives in exchange for affordability.
Okay, right back to the density, this solution is another, more in the same space. We're back to the density issue. So I, I, I still don't get where we've seen things that are not putting, you know, packing more into the same space.
That's really the primary, on the single family side, that's really the primary mechanism that you have avail, I mean, the, the other things would be, you know, yeah, I think, I mean, everything, I mean, unless you're, you're, we looked at the fee rebates, right? They didn't move things all that much. We looked at, you know, administrative approval didn't really move things, like, there weren't a lot of regulatory and monetary changes that really changed the math all that much. It really, density was the primary driver, both for multifamily and for single family.
Yeah, I, I guess the concern on the, on the housing thing is, is similar, is that you can get into a unit, and if you get into it cheaper, that doesn't allow you to then maintain that unit. Things come up. If, you know, there's other things that go on, you can't predict that. So that, that would be the concern. And then it does put additional pressure on the town for services and schools and roads and, you know, so again, you're solving one problem, but enhancing others.
And did you have any?
No.
David?
Yeah, would you mind going back to, I think it was slide 31 or 32? It might have been the one above that, maybe, maybe slide 28, is where you were talking about like the nonprofits getting engaged. So this one, yes, okay, so slide 31. I guess, I guess my question would be, just to clarify, because it sounds like there's some confusion on this, and I wanted to clarify myself. So you're saying that these homes might cost a little bit above $324,000 to produce, but nonprofits can get engaged and help sell them for less to make homeownership more affordable? And I think all of us can agree that, that homeownership is, is very valuable. But if, if this property is being sold for $324,000, but it's, it's worth, you know, $550,000, what would be stopping the buyer who goes, who's maybe at 80% AMI, who can get that house for $324,000, to then, the very next month, go and sell it for 550 that their neighbor's homes are worth?
Yeah, that's a great question, and those are things that, you know, if the town elects to move forward with the design of a program like this, we're going to get into all of those little administrative things that need to be considered. Frequently, the way that first time homebuyer programs operate is, you know, there might be a requirement to stay in the home for five years, for 10 years, something like that.
Okay, I think there's some nonprofits.
If you were to sell it, if you were to sell it before that time, maybe a portion of that subsidy is forgiven.
Okay.
But, but maybe, you know, you have to, I don't want to say pay a penalty, because that puts people in a really tough position, but, but there's, there's ways to think about that. It's a really, it's a great question, and it's one that we haven't fully resolved yet because we haven't gotten to that point yet. We're trying to get kind of proof of concept, but I think it is one that we absolutely need to, need to sort out.
Okay, quick follow up on that. Has that, like, where does that idea come from? Like, has this been done in other communities that it's shown efficacy?
I don't think we've seen other communities approaching it in this way. I think probably, if I'm, if, if, if I were to, if you were to ask me to make a recommendation right now, I would say that the donating of the lots is the most straightforward way to go with this, because it's cleaner, like, the developers then don't have to be building the home. There are nonprofit developers that do this all the time. And so the land donation opportunity, I think, is a great one to produce those houses, those housing units that are affordable to first time homebuyers without asking the developer to take, basically build it, like you say, build a $700,000 home and then sell it for half of that. So I think that that's, that's the most straightforward way to go. And probably, I mean, we've, we certainly talked to developers that have used that approach in the past, but we wanted to look at both options.
Right, thank you.
Because I feel like I've read somewhere about some nonprofits that did this, and they somehow took a, like, if they did turn around and sell it in that shorter time, that they somehow kept some of the profit. I think, I don't think I'm making that up, but, I mean, that seems like that might be a little bit more of a fairer way, because then that money could then go back into the pot. This nonprofit or whoever could use that to do more houses elsewhere, whatever.
Yeah, the other way to, the other way to restrict it, and this is something that we talked about a little bit in the, in the next section, but the other way to restrict it is to say, this house has to be available, actually, this is probably the better way to do it, if you want to go the building the house and selling it route, or potentially either way. This house has to be affordable to an 80% AMI household over the next 30 years. So I can decide after three months in my house that I want to sell it, but I have to sell it to an 80% AMI household at a price that is affordable to an 80% AMI household. So if I've been in the house for three years, maybe it's appreciated a little bit, maybe what your average 80% AMI household can afford has gone up a little bit, but I'm still not selling it at full market rate, I'm selling it to another income qualified home buyer. I'm getting back, any of the equity that I've built in the house, I'm getting back a certain amount of the appreciation based on, you know, what's gone up in terms of what an 80% AMI household can afford to buy. But that, that unit that the town has created, it's not, oh, it was affordable for two years, and now it's just a market rate house again. It's, it's still affordable, we've recorded a covenant saying that it has to be sold to an income qualified buyer. So that's another mechanism that's available.
How long would you say that typically lasts, like 30 years or?
I, I said 30 years as a starting point, we could evaluate different options for that. But yeah, I think 30 years is, is a good one, a good starting point.
Just, I don't know, I hear that, and I hear price control or rent control, which, you know, we had in New York City, and, you know, there's nothing good about it, you know, in my opinion, but that's kind of what I hear and I get.
It's similar to what you'd be doing on the multifamily side, where you say, we are investing a subsidy into this unit with the understanding that it will be affordable for the next 30 years. So it's the same thing, but just with, with giving somebody the opportunity to build equity in a home while.
How do you avoid the circumvention of those rules? Because I think.
You record an affordability covenant into, onto the property.
To unit packing, subletting, additional folks in the housing, I mean, there's a bunch of ways to circumvent that, even with the, you know, rental unit things. I mean, how do you control that?
I mean, I think any, any home in the town, you.
It's hard to do, right? I mean, it's.
But again, we're talking about a household of $80,000 of income. We're not talking about.
But those terms are to carry over, like, right? Like, you know, if, if I'm at the 80% AMI and I buy it for 324, you know, you're saying there are things in place that I can't go and two months later sell it for that amount? Like, I can't go just start a corporation, sell it to my corporation, and hold on to that property and then rent it out?
Right, anytime anybody's pulling the title on that property, they're seeing not only the mortgage that you have on it that's recorded, but they're also seeing something that's recorded that says, this has to be owned by somebody who is afford, has.
And so just a follow up to that part on the resale. So assuming everything goes well, I have this house, I sell it to another buyer who meets that qualification. How do you decide which buyer gets it? So I've got five people, is there a bid on that and gets bid up? Is there a selection process? How do you decide?
Again, this is all kind of in the down the line thing, but just to kind of illustrate it. I mean, usually you would have maybe a nonprofit housing counselor or somebody else who's doing the. or somebody else who's doing the income verification. You have some process for income verification. Anybody who's buying, interested in buying a house in Morrisville who meets the income qualifications goes and gets an income verification, puts the house on the market. You say it has these restrictions on it. Maybe you have a nonprofit partner that's also advertising that house to anybody that they've income-qualified or anybody that they're providing housing counseling to as a way to boost the market, or boost the marketability and make sure that buyers are aware of this property. And then the same as a usual, a typical housing transaction, you accept bids. But part of that bid package, in addition to having your mortgage financing or your preapproval letter, you have to have your income verification.
It kind of feels like this could all be run through. I do sort of see where it'd be a lot easier just to donate that lot. There's people that do this, like literally.
Yes, there are ways to do this.
Lot of complicated problems about this, there's no doubt.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that is part of the sort of, if we move to phase two, we're going to talk about all of these things. There are mechanisms in place to do it either way you want to go. But we're kind of, again, we're really trying to understand, are we interested in townhomes? How far do we want to push density? Is this something we should even be considering for single-family? I think that's kind of the level of feedback that we're looking for right now.
And I appreciate you just saying that, Sarah, and I'll echo it. I do think the goal of tonight is these parking reductions, these fee-in-lieu reductions, these, we're going to add some townhomes into the mix, we're going to go with smaller lots. Are these things that in your mind are on the table to consider or not? And once we hear from you, once we hear from town council, if the direction we receive is to go ahead, then we're going to start drafting amendments. Then we're going to start talking about administration and how specifically all of that would work. But for tonight, we're trying to get a sense of what's on the table and should we even be taking that next step? But anything that we might do is going to come with some component of administration where units need to be set aside in some manner to stay affordable for a certain period of time.
Can we just move along?
Great. That's really the end of the discussion on the incentive zoning. We had sort of plotted out, again, we think you should be focusing at 60% of AMI on the multifamily side. That's another area that we're looking for feedback on. And I think it's up for discussion whether the town home scenario is something that we pursue or not. But we've kind of put together what we think are some of the best options for the town, but definitely looking for feedback on all of those levers that Michelle just laid out. Also, I think we've talked a little bit about additional incentives or policies that we should be thinking about, gotten some feedback there as well. So I think we've gone almost to time, but I want to go briefly through the Housing Choice Program update. So the other piece of work, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just because I, that's going to really shift the conversation to something that's different. If I could ask that we maybe back up a little because we're hoping to get a recommendation, a feel from the Planning and Zoning Board that we could share with our town council about how you feel about some of these incentives. So if we could back up and at least have a brief discussion about the multifamily options, the single-family options, you know, a 20, 30, 50% parking reduction. How the majority of you feel about that? Do you think that's on the table to consider more? A height increase, you know, the parkland payment in lieu. Is that money that we're getting so valuable to purchase additional parkland that that's something we don't want to touch, or is that on the table? I think it would be very helpful to get a feel from the group as a whole on some of those things so we could share that with the town council. So I don't know if we could go back to the multifamily options and maybe talk about some of those and then move on to the single-family, if you don't mind, Sarah?
Yeah, I mean, this, this kind of sums up like the main points that we think are the best option for the town, but if it's helpful to go back to the.
So, let me start. It feels like to me that I think, I mean, while some of the stuff you're saying is a goal, even like the reduction in 3,500-square-foot lots, whatever, I don't necessarily know that that's quite what we would want to do. Some of this stuff might work better around the town center just because you naturally want that density there. So that's probably a good place to drive that. But it feels like, you know, just given the market and what's here and given the current housing stock, I mean, it may be pushing things a little bit too far to go all the way to what you guys were saying. I don't know, you know, just sort of as a starting point. Same with like the parking, 50%? I mean, maybe if we could go back, I mean, because, you know, we live in a car society. I mean, we've talked about it multiple people. This is, it's going to be a long time before transit is viable to not have a car in Morrisville. Even to not have, you know, even to get rid of one car is not going to be feasible for most people in the next 15 to 20 years. I mean, and I guess, I don't know if you want to go from there, but.
And for the rest of town, it's one space for a one-bedroom, one and a half for a two, and two spaces for a two-bedroom, or for a three-bedroom, sorry.
John?
Yeah, I think the density bonus is kind of a no-brainer. I think that works in other municipalities, other communities. It's proven, it's effective. I do think that parking, to echo what Lisa, parking minimum reduction would work in the TOD, in the downtown area that's coming. I think that would be really supported there where you're going to ultimately have some type of public transit that can support reducing the parking minimums, so.
I'm still pondering.
Okay. Ken?
I'm still pondering too, but I will say that while I understand that, you know, the town was tasked by town council, we're looking into these, you know, incentives in the UDO. We had a presentation on affordable housing in Morrisville, maybe a year, year and a half ago, I don't remember. And I think the, you know, the outcome of that was Morrisville does not have a housing affordability problem. So, you know, maybe we will eventually, but from that presentation, from what I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, we don't have an issue with affordable housing here. So I'm kind of wondering why we're doing this, to be quite honest.
I remember that too, Ken, so I was, that's why I didn't.
I wouldn't say it was zero.
It wasn't zero, but we started to talk about the industry coming in and the growth of wake tech and all of this free ability to train. And even in the pharmaceutical, the maintenance that you referenced, those are high-paying jobs. And so we just didn't see that, and we were 100% supporting for our police or firemen. You know, we, we supported that initiative.
Well, that's coming next.
But this, yeah, that's coming up. But this portion, I thought we had put that aside as well. So when I went through the deck and I'm looking, oh, these people didn't live here. So I'm kind of in Ken's boat that, you know, I don't, I don't see putting the extra parking, the extra, all of this complexity into Morrisville when there were jobs here, there's good-paying jobs here, and we're such a small community that people can certainly drive here.
Exactly in the same, same boat. I said that in 2019 when we first looked at it and kind of still in the same mindset.
Yeah, I, I mean, I concur with the majority here. I, I just really think that it's important for us all to be on the same page of what the problem is and actually have it clearly defined. And I, and I do think it's germane. I didn't mean to cause too much of a stir with the multifamily conversation, but I do think it's germane for us to figure out, you know, we all have this shared common goal of wanting to ensure whether or not we have an affordability crisis or that we may have one in the future, to plan and prepare for that. But make sure that we're all on the same page of the macroeconomics behind it and how that's going to work when we're talking about things like subsidies. So, you know, I, I do really like the, the building height as part of your presentation. I think that's something that, you know, right out of the gate, we can, like I said, like I said in the beginning, you know, build up when we can't build out. And I think that that would add more units and, and help mitigate the problem or mitigate the potential for a problem. But I, I do think this warrants further discussion and figuring out exactly what that looks like and maybe having a more clear definition of exactly where we're at right now with the affordability problem.
Yeah. You know, the council has their work cut out for them because doing a lot of these things would be different than what has been done in Morrisville in the past. And so, you know, we need to weigh what we think about, you know, 20, 30 years from now. I mean, that's the thing, now we don't have a problem, but it's easy to let that slip out from under us. So you got to look at it all, you know, so I can see where, you know, some of this stuff might come in handy. But like I said, I don't know that we need to quite go as far as the smallest of every, you know, maybe the middle of the road is a little bit more reasonable.
No, 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 I don't, I don't.
Nick, we're just trying to be realistic.
Yeah.
I just wanted to point out, I think the challenge that comes for us, which is the work that we have.
I mean, just too, because you, it brings back what you're saying before, you know, people might park on the street. Most streets in Morrisville are not, that's not an option. That we just don't have streets like that. So especially the ones that we're going to have a multifamily, five-story, six-story, whatever. So that, that's part of the problem is like, that just literally is not an option. You can't park on the side of five-lane with a turn, you know? So that, that's, I mean, that's, you know, what I kind of come back to. But we'll never make a change if we don't push those things. So like I said, that there's got to be, push it toward the middle maybe.
Thank you for that extra discussion. I appreciate it. I think I heard a lot of the things that Sarah did, and that's helpful to be able to forward that on to the town council.
I mean, is everyone willing to? Yeah, sure, please.
Done a survey?
Yes.
So we know there's interest in helping public employees who work in Morrisville and who serve the community. Council, I believe, had directed in. Housing preferences of town employees as well as. Understand the housing choices people had made. And their interest in a program that would provide support. Got a pretty good response rate. It was 15% for the school system. But we had response from almost half of town employees. And in general, overall, a 20% response. Of those who we surveyed, about 13% live in Morrisville. And there was pretty strong support for some sort of program to help. We looked at the distribution of income in general, the school system, the people who. But a pretty broad distribution, as I said, lower incomes, a little bit higher. Over 70, or 73% of those that we surveyed had. Almost all of the employees we heard from were. Most have been working for the town.
Okay, and I hate to interrupt you. Can you, can you just clarify exactly what the chart, what the axes are? Because I, I don't see how these numbers add up.
Yeah, each of these is the number of respondents.
Oh, the number, not percentage. Okay, gotcha, okay.
Number of respondents in each income.
Perfect.
And when we asked people why they made the housing choices they made, cost, quality of life, and proximity to their job. The majority had housing costs, monthly housing costs. And renters skewed a little bit lower in terms of their. Of the people who don't live in Morrisville, some said, cited that cost was a primary factor. One thing that was surprising for me, at least in the survey results, almost half, or actually over half. If they might move, they might move to Morrisville. We also asked about the level of interest in various types of. Somewhat unsurprisingly, the lower-income respondents were more interested in rental assistance. But there was really strong support for down-payment assistance in particular, as well as strong support for equity, which is another form of. Wasn't a lot of interest.
I'm sorry to, I'm 41, you went through that really quick. On the, on the, the folks that were planning to move, that, these are folks that indicated they're planning to move to Morrisville. Just not move, just somewhere?
Just not move.
Okay.
They anticipate that they won't live where they live currently.
Okay, thank you.
Not even necessarily between.
Fair enough.
So we did some case research. For potentially providing. Basically, rental assistance is just a straight. Flexible renter support, this one's a little bit weird, it's very, very small. But what it does is do things like. Help them if they can't afford. Offer, maybe they're paying an extra. Or services that can. Those are relatively low-cost, they don't help people who can't. Down-payment assistance. Of reducing the cost of. Either by investing in the home in some way. So a rental assistance program provides direct assistance to. Below $50,000. Or assistance to town employees, it could be administered through. But it's potentially. It doesn't create permanent affordability, so. And it could be potentially a challenge. We looked at some examples of employers that have provided this kind of. Other municipalities, triangle that provide rental assistance, it's been. Boys, it's been more about helping residents to access funding. Had a temporary setback, for instance, you lost your job.
The example you used in mid, live midtown, that got, that stopped, it's no longer around. You know what, what happened to that program?
I don't, I don't personally. Have some ideas about what a rental assistance program could look like. Not going to talk about the flexible rental support, I think I talked about it. Down payment assistance is the most direct means of incentivizing... At the highest level of interest from survey response. Down payment assistance. Or are we really trying to move? Some administrative requirements. Looked at some examples of employee, like public employee homeownership programs. Some of them bridge the affordability gap. They have an existing down payment program that... But what they did was they dedicated a... That existing program. Again, there are some other communities in the area that... And then shared equity homeownership, again, this is... Homes to be sold in perpetuity to... They're much more capital-intensive because of town... Couple of different ways to do this. Nonprofit own the land. Shared appreciation loan. Or covenant-preserved affordable housing. Somebody has developed this home that the town has put some money into it in exchange. So different approaches there, depending on what... And so again, when we go to council, what we want to talk to them about, what are the goals and priorities that we wish to... Talk briefly about next steps, because we've talked about them a little bit. Based on the feedback we've gotten here, based on the feedback from the council, we're going to revise all of these scenarios and come up with... Align with the town's priorities. Finalize the framework for...
I have a question for staff. These are not one or the other, correct? I mean, we could say, yeah, we want, we like the affordable, the employee incentive program and the general affordable housing program. Or we can say, yeah, we like the assistance for employees, but not the general affordability program.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Josh?
Thanks for the presentation.
Tim?
The only thing I would, I went over very quickly, but on page 49, some of those services, I think actually are very good, and we may want to look at expanding. So there's legal services and financial services, there are typical employee benefits in this space that might actually just be, you know, a very easy thing to provide folks without getting into the affordable housing component of things. So it might be just a separate and distinct option if we wanted to pursue that.
Try to provide support to renters. Fundamentally change who can afford...
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for your presentation. It's very engaging, and appreciate you taking the time to answer our questions and go into, go into triple overtime, so thank you.
Just, I think just saying that.
Our job is to put forward to you, both now and as we near the end of phase one, our job is to put forward, hopefully palatable to you, exciting to you, and also work. That, and I think that's a good discussion. That's really our job, is to find you out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you won't...
Workshop as well, but because we do have additional people in attendance as well, if you are so inclined to take, like, the three-minute public comment if anyone didn't want to speak. If that was something, just since it is a work session, not a public hearing, I just want to see if that was okay.
Sure.
If anyone did want to speak.
You got anyone?
Does, that's okay, we just want to make sure.
Thank you for that. Now we can move on to staff comments.
Yeah, and I'd just also like to thank you for your input and conversation. It's a complex topic, for sure, and so appreciate it. If we could dive into the planning newsletter, that would be great. Just to go over what's been happening in the planning world over the past month, in September, there were no new submittals for site plans. In other news, the town has updated its interactive development map, so if you haven't had a chance to go online and look at that yet, the look and feel, again, is very similar to what we had before, but we needed to change to a new platform. So there are a few little enhancements in there, and I'd encourage you to take a look. Also want to give a shout out to Planner Two, Caleb Allred. He presented information about the Morrisville Smart Shuttle at the State Planning Conference in September. He did a great job, so just wanted to recognize him for that. And then moving on to town council approvals, the town council did recently discuss the CTP implementation items. If you recall, Danielle had presented that to you, I don't know, probably about two months ago now, and you afforded a recommendation to town council. They considered that over two meetings, and we now have some priority action items to move, to work on moving forward. In terms of administrative site plans that were approved, an approval was granted for a new caliper collision off of AirTech Boulevard, or AirTech Drive. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any committee comments? Start down with Josh.
No comments.
Great presentation, it was a lot of work from everybody. I'm sorry we kept everybody over, but I think we had good questions, so thank you for your patience with us.
Ken?
No.
Ted? Dave? None for me either. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Do we have a second? Ken second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.